Okay, so basically, we're not giving up any economic asset. We're just not taxing new construction.
Yeah.
For three years.
Absolutely, so.
You know, we're not losing.
I don't want to say you're not losing, because I think technically in some areas you would be losing a small amount of money, right? So even a vacant lot in the city of Rockford, although you probably get almost no dollars from, you do get some dollars from. Minimal dollars. Most of these plots, especially many on the outskirts of the city of Rockford that are already plotted, some are taking advantage of agricultural use, so they're not really getting taxed by you much at all. So I don't, I just don't want to say you're losing nothing. I think you are losing literally probably less than a couple thousand dollars if you participate in this program.
And are the other agencies agreeing to the entire program, or is it housing by housing by housing?
No, we ask that everyone just signs up. The attraction of this model, when we worked with Northwest Realtors to develop this model, is make it simple, make it clear, and make it universal. And so every taxing body who participates, you're taxing the one, the two, or the multifamily, or you're rebating the one, the two, and the multifamily. No matter where that is, as long as it's on an existing plot, you would rebate that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
We also, I should just add, we do all the backend work, so the finances work, the rebating of it, we handle all of that inside the city of Rockford and not to put that burden on you and your staff.
Ellen, do you have any questions?
I just have a comment.
Okay, go ahead.
When this came up last year, and oh, by the way, congratulations on your reelection. When this came up last year, one of my concerns was, and you mentioned it today, the entities that are being involved, Rockford Township, Rockford Public Schools, Rockford, the Rockford Rock. My concern was that we don't just serve Rockford. We have the six counties, even though there's slivers in some of them. And my concern was, what if any of these little towns or cities would come up and request the same thing? How would we respond, and where do we draw the line? So I guess my biggest concern would be having to tell other folks, no, because we did this already, or, you know, how do we balance all that? That was part of the discussion here. So I don't know if that's still up in the air, but that's my thoughts.
I don't know if you're asking it to me, but I'll just answer it and say, I think you say yes. I mean, I think it's a, when you look at it from a financial perspective for the college, you're gonna put at risk a minimal amount of money that we have seen before this program. The likelihood of developing is incredibly low. This provides that incentive and has shown that it will create new construction, which then on those taxing bodies, or it'll create new construction and then make those parcels actually productive and providing you much more money for years and years to come. So if another community wants to do it, I would say yes, because you'll put at risk a very small amount short term for an incredible gain long term.
Okay, thank you.
So if we went here, next steps, we're talking an IGA?
Yes, so once you, and we have, we have the intergovernmental agreement for it here, we may have already sent it over, that we approved and the other taxing bodies approved. Also have a little one pager I could provide you, that if any of your residents have, you know, some basic questions, it can answer some. We also, our finance director, as well as our city administrator, at your disposal to answer any questions that maybe I could not, or a resident pops up with a new question, but we can provide you all of that.
Yeah, I think we would need some written documentation, obviously.
Yep.
We're missing two board members, but also just to make it a matter of record is exactly what the proposal is.
Absolutely, and I have, have it here, and I don't know who I would.
Give it to Ellen.
So yes, the concern was, how much are we talking about we're giving up at the beginning here initially, even though we understand that there'll be investment after three years, right?
Yeah, and I tried to, you're 100% right, and President, I tried to go back through a couple of vacant parcels just today, just to pull out what they're actually paying you. The three I looked up are paying you nothing. Now, I only looked up three, so I don't want to say you're, that's why I corrected, because I just don't want to commit to nothing when, nothing's free, right? You're gonna give up something. I just think the long-term gain, gain for you, not only in property taxes, but the more people who are coming here, often people have children, and those children often come to RVC. And so I think you're gonna grow our population, help our workforce, help this college long term, and also have more revenue to work on.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Richard.
In regards to the different partners that are involved in this, how much would that person be saving in taxes?
So I can't tell you the new program, because we're still waiting on other taxing bodies to come in. If you've looked at a home that was, let's say, a $200,000 home, constructed, that it cost to construct a $200,000 home, we were saving roughly about $28,000 for that person to invest in Rockford.
That's over a three-year period?
Yep. And so we're, our goal is, I mean, we need people and to incentivize them to move to Rockford. So if you've seen multiple things that we have done, if it's, you know, providing free bus rides to individuals, if it's providing free college tuition, if it's making sure everyone has fiber optic cable in front of their home, and now if you build a new home, we'll do this, we, we need to grow our population. This is one way that's proven to do it in other areas, and we're optimistic, and the, it's showing that it's working here.
So obviously, it's 28,000 for a single-family home. How much is an apartment complex saving?
I can get you those numbers. I don't have them off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Crystal?
So after the three years, where, what happens after that? Does that, I guess we would have to ask Ellen too, where does that leave the college? Is it just back to regular scheduled programming, you know?
Yeah.
You know, are we better off? Does it, does it take us back some steps? I guess would be my next question, future-wise, I mean, three years, yes, it goes by like that, but then what happens to us afterwards?
After that, you would, my recommendation to you would be go back to regular business, and all that revenue from, let's say, Tom built a single-family home, and I pay RVC $990 a year for taxes. Now you're starting to collect that. Where before, on my vacant parcel, you were collecting $9 of taxes. That's where I think the big advantage is, and that's why we're not doing it forever. It's a, we did it last year, we want to do it this year, because we saw a huge growth just in the last three months of last year, that people really started hearing about it and wanting to do it, and we saw more and more growth. So we want to do it for one more year, and then that's it.
So Ellen, I think my, my other concern would be just how does that put us in the brackets? Like, does that take away some of the funds that we have in other places? Because, you know, I don't want to be penalized for here, you know, you're getting this and that. Oh, that's fine, yeah.
All right, so as far as implications to Rock Valley College, as the mayor said, it would, we would not receive any tax revenue for three years.
Right.
On the vacant lots.
Sure.
But after the three years, we would receive the tax revenue based on the new home, apartment building, whatever their EAV is. So that, I believe, is what he's saying is the benefit to us. By abating it for the three years, we are incenting people to build homes in Rockford for future annuity.
So it wouldn't hurt us after those three years? Nothing will, it wouldn't?
No.
Okay.
slivers in some of them. And my concern was, what if any of these little towns or cities would come up and request the same thing? How would we respond, and where do we draw the line? So, I guess my biggest concern would be having to tell other folks, no, because we did this already, or, you know, how do we balance all that? And that was part of the discussion here. So, I don't know if that's still up in the air, but that's my thoughts.
I don't know if you're asking it to me, but I'll just answer it and say, I think you say yes. I mean, I think it's a, when you look at it from a financial perspective for the college, you're gonna put at risk a minimal amount of money that we have seen before this program, the likelihood of developing is incredibly low. This provides that incentive and has shown that it will create new construction, which then on those taxing bodies, or it'll create new construction and then make those parcels actually productive and providing you much more money for years and years to come. So, if another community wants to do it, I would say yes, because you'll put at risk a very small amount short-term for an incredible gain long-term.
Okay, thank you.
So, if we went here, next steps, we're talking an IGA?
Yes, so, once you, and we have, we have the intergovernmental agreement for it here, we may have already sent it over, that we approved and the other taxing bodies approved to also have a little one-page, or I could provide you that if any of your residents have, you know, some basic questions, it can answer some. We also, our finance director, as well as our city administrator, at your disposal to answer any questions that maybe I could not, or a resident pops up with a new question, but we can provide you all of that.
Yeah, I think we would need some written documentation, obviously. We're missing two board members, but also, just to make it a matter of record is exactly what the proposal is.
Absolutely, and I have it here, and I don't know who I would.
Give it to Ellen.
So, yes, the concern was, how much are we talking about we're giving up at the beginning here initially, even though we understand that there'll be investment after three years, right?
Yeah, and I tried to, you're 100% right. And President, I tried to go back through a couple of vacant parcels just today, just to pull out what they're actually paying you. The three I looked up are paying you nothing. Now, I only looked up three, so I don't want to say you're, that's why I corrected, because I just don't want to commit to nothing when, nothing's free, right? You're gonna give up something. I just think the long-term gain, gain for you, not only in property taxes, but the more people who are coming here, often people have children, and those children often come to RVC. And so, I think you're gonna grow our population, help our workforce, help this college long-term, and also have more revenue to work on.
Can I ask a question?
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Richard.
In regards to the different partners that are involved in this, how much would that person be saving in taxes?
So, I can't tell you the new program, because we're still waiting on other taxing bodies to come in. If you've looked at a home that was, let's say, a $200,000 home, that it cost to construct a $200,000 home, we were saving roughly about $28,000 for that person to invest in Rockford.
That's over a three-year period?
Yep. And so, we're, our goal is, I mean, we need people and to incentivize them to move to Rockford. So, if you've seen multiple things that we have done, if it's, you know, providing free bus rides to individuals, if it's providing free college tuition, if it's making sure everyone has fiber optic cable in front of their home, and now if you build a new home, we'll do this, we need to grow our population. This is one way that's proven to do it in other areas, and we're optimistic, and it's showing that it's working here.
So, obviously, it's 28,000 for a single-family home. How much is an apartment complex saving?
I can get you those numbers, I don't have them off the top of my head, but I can get that for you.
Any other questions?
Yeah.
Crystal.
So, after the three years, where, what happens after that? Does that, I guess we would have to ask Ellen too, where does that leave the college? Is it just back to regular scheduled programming, you know? You know, are we better off? Does it, does it take us back some steps? I guess would be my next question, future-wise, I mean, three years, yes, it goes by like that, but then what happens to us afterwards?
After that, you would, my recommendation to you would be, go back to regular business and all that revenue from, let's say, Tom built a single-family home, and I pay RVC $990 a year for taxes, now you're starting to collect that. Where before, on my vacant parcel, you were collecting $9 of taxes. That's where I think the big advantage is, and that's why we're not doing it forever. It's a, we did it last year, we want to do it this year, because we saw huge growth just in the last three months of last year, that people really started hearing about it and wanting to do it, and we saw more and more growth. So, we want to do it for one more year, and then that's it.
So, Ellen, I think my other concern would be just how does that put us in the brackets? Like, does that take away some of the funds that we have in other places? Because, you know, I don't want to be penalized for here, you know, you're getting this and that. Oh, that's fine, yeah.
So, as far as implications to Rock Valley College, as the mayor said, it would, we would not receive any tax revenue for three years on the vacant lots. But after the three years, we would receive the tax revenue based on the new home, apartment building, whatever their EAV is. So, that, I believe is what he's saying is the benefit to us. By abating it for the three years, we are incenting people to build homes in Rockford for future annuity.
So, it wouldn't hurt us after those three years? Nothing will, it wouldn't?
No.
Okay.
Just based on last year trustee, we increased the EAV with those new construction units, the 71, single-family, et cetera, by about $7 million. So, I hope it's up, I hope it's more like 10, 12 million dollars this year, but we'll be pushing it out there and marketing it.
Okay. Nico, you have a question?
If we were to accept this deal, would you come to the board in three years and request us to do this again, or is that?
I have no intention to do that. I will tell you, I didn't know, I was gonna come and ask a second time, we just had success with the first time, but we're really, we have a gap in what it costs to construct between the labor and the materials and the taxes, we have a gap to incentivize folks to move here. I'm hoping that we are closing that gap and that no one will have to come back here.
Okay. Thank you.
Of course, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, congratulations on your recent victory. So, what's the downside for the college?
What's the downside? I mean, I think you have, if I think of being a trustee, I would say two downsides. I mean, I'm trying to think. I would say the one downside is what trustee Cadilla stated, which was if you, if you say yes to Rockford and Rockton comes to you and has this very same proposal, you kind of have to say yes, right? Or you'll feel like you do, right? Or it would be difficult to say no. I stated before you walked in, trustee Nelson, that I would say yes if someone wants to do this on vacant, existing parcels. The other downside, I mean, you would, it wouldn't be a downside, you'd still get, if no one builds anything, you're still gonna get that vacant property tax revenue, which will be minimal, but you would still get it. I don't see, I think the only downside maybe is what trustee Cadilla is saying, if other communities want to do it.
The parade of horribles.
I don't know.
That's what lawyers say.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
When would, when would you say the three years kick in?
I don't have my ordinance anymore, but we want it now.
As soon as possible.
Yeah, as soon as possible. We, I know Forest Preserve is, they initially said no, they're now going back to their board and looking at it. I know the others either have a date set that they're looking at it in the next, don't hold me to this, President, I don't have it in front of me, but I'd say in the next 30 days, 45 days, we really want to button this up and say, these groups are in or they're out.
Okay, I think we're all done. Thank you very much, Mayor, and congratulations again on behalf of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, now we want to speak a little bit about Rockford Promise.
Yeah, okay.
We asked, I asked Mayor McNamara to come in, he and I have had some good conversations about it. I've had some good conversations with the board regarding Rockford Promise, it's just, and we have Rockford Promise students that have been coming here for several years now. I was originally on the Rockford Promise Board to help stop, establish this. So, I want to make sure that's clear, but where's your take with it? How do you see us partnering with Rockford Promise and this initiative in the future?
Yeah, let me first tell you where we're at with it. So, we have two Rockford Promise programs that, two initiatives that the City of Rockford is funding. One is Rockford Promise NIU Partnership. Any child who lives in Rockford, goes to Rockford Public Schools, earns a 3.0, can go to NIU tuition-free. We have 400 kids on their campus, we have about 223 that just applied this year. We will have our first, well, we actually had our first graduates, they graduate a year early. That was not me, by the way. I took all four. Then, we have a second partnership that we expanded this past year, and that is with Rockford University. And it says, if you go to any high school in the City of Rockford, and you earn a 3.0 GPA and you're low and moderate income, you can go to Rockford University tuition-free. I will say, that program, I think, has between 40 and 60 children who have applied to take advantage of it for this coming school year. With all that being said, I first want to say a thank you to President Spearmen. I think we've had the most productive conversations I've had with the President from Rock Valley College and with you, President Spearmen. Our first ask was to go to RVC. Before NIU, before RU, the very first group we went to was RVC. And what we wanted was, we want to make sure that every single child who goes to Rockford, and we always want to continue to expand the program, and that means expand the number of institutions and expand the number of children being able to utilize it. And so, ideally, what we would like is any child who goes to Rockford Public Schools, who earns a 2.5 GPA, that they get to go to RVC tuition-free. It would be that simple. Now, what does that cost? All of you, I, every group that we've partnered with has provided some form of a discount, and I think we would want that as well. I don't think it has to be as lofty as maybe some would think. I'm not 100% sure, but I think, what, about 60% of Rockford Public School students, maybe 70%, could even be higher, but let's say 60% are MAP and PEL eligible? And if a student's MAP and PEL eligible, for the most part, their tuition is covered at RVC, is that correct?
Yes, if they're fully.
If they're full MAP, full PEL, they're not paying anything out of pocket for tuition?
Correct.
Okay. So, my thought is, you know, I want 100% of them go for free, tell me what the cost is to cover the 40%, and now you'll take 100% of the kids. It's not a complex thing, and I would say the next question's gonna come as similar as the last program, is, you know, if another community says they want to do this, I jump all over it. I think it's good for the institution, I think it's, I know it's good for our kids, and I know it's good for our community. Our kids want RVC to be included. I want RVC fully funded. I just got to find a way to do it that's financially sustainable in every partner, if it's the private schools, if it's the public schools, if it's NIU, or if it's Rockford University, all of them have provided some form of partnership or discount for their services and to be included in. That's what we're looking for.
So, the question is that you would want us to absorb the tuition, not you would pay for it via the casino revenues?
Our offer was always that we would pay for it.
What?
Our offer, trustee Trojan, is that we would pay for it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, not us, them. Not us, them.
But, I mean, I'm not gonna say, no, if you want to pay for it, I'll let you pay for it.
But we would discount the rate, is what you're asking for, yeah.
Casino dollars, they would cover that cost, as long as there was a discount available. And then, if for some reason there were unperceivable additional fees in the future, then RVC would have to absorb that.
Yes, so like if, well, I'll wait till you ask questions, sorry.
We got a question here from Nico.
Would they have to graduate high school, or would they be in the running start program too, or is that kind of?
Graduate high school, separate initiatives.
Okay, all right, thank you.
John?
We got to fill that downtown extravaganza with something.
Pardon me?
We have, we're raising tuition money for the downtown building.
Yes, we have a scholarship program.
Yeah, and I think we could factor that into the discount some kind of way, would be my thought. We want students down there.
Gloria?
I think I just need clarification. Originally, I thought I heard you say public school students, and then in this last sentence or two, you mentioned private schools. So, would private schools be able to be part of this, like, let's say Boylan or Lutheran High School, or any of these?
So, I initially said our partnership with the NIU is just public.
I see, okay.
Then I said our partnership with Rockford University is public and private.
I see, okay.
Our partnership with RVC is something we need to work out, and so I have not said it's public or private.
Okay, and then during the conversations, you said we will pay for it, and then you said something, you said they will pay for it. Who are the we, who is the they? Are these the entities that are raising funds, or the taxpayers?
So, the City of Rockford, technically, but everything that you deal with and I deal with are taxpayers. So, ultimately, yes, the taxpayers, but the City of Rockford as our entity and organization, we have covered the cost for the other two programs.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, all right, well, again, thank.
Appreciate it. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the teaching, learning, communication discussion. Item number one is the enrollment update.
Good evening, trustees.
Hello.
Hello. You have two enrollment updates in your packet, one for fiscal year '25 and one for fiscal year '26. I'm not going to comment on FY '25, there's no real change from your packet at the point we are in this semester. But I do want to make a few notes on the fiscal year '26 enrollment update. You'll notice that the goals are different than fiscal year '25. We've increased the budget goal from 110,000 credit hours to 115,000 credit hours, and we've increased the stretch goal from 115, or, yeah, 115 to 120,000 credit hours. We also changed the distribution of credit hours across semesters, so you might see a little bit of different reporting as we look at each semester individually to better represent the percentage of enrollment we get for each term. As of this week, a bit of a change from your packet, but it's still good news that we're ahead of last year by, still about 27% for summer two, and ahead of last year by about 9% for fall. It's still early in the registration cycle, as registration started in March for both of those terms, but we'll continue to watch, of course, the percent to budget and the percent to stretch as we move towards those semesters.
I have a couple. Go ahead. You want me to go first?
Sure.
Okay, a couple questions.
Sure.
First of all, the fiscal year '25, spring, oh, sorry, fall to spring is virtually flat, whereas in the past, we, and in fact, you've even budgeted to be lower in the spring. Why is it flat? I mean, that's a good thing, that it's flat, because usually it's a drop. What happened?
I think some of the efforts with retention, including implementation of the CRM, are likely, have improved the registration and retention from fall to spring, and adding some additional new students in spring.
And early college.
It's good.
Oh, thank you. Dr. Pyer reminded me how many early college students we had registered for this spring. They were, the high schools were really on top of getting us registrations in time for our reporting, but we've also had a lot more early college students enrolled in various programs.
Okay, I mean, that's a good thing.
Yes.
Now, the second question is, you're showing for '26, you're showing 115,000 hours, and Ellen's showing 110,000 hours, which is on the conservative side. Why have you got the disparity in the numbers? I know Ellen's conservative on the budgeting, that's why, that's the answer, I think.
That is the answer.
We'll try not to drop the mic again. And when I was doing my budgeting, you are right, Chairman Trojan, that I am very conservative, and when I approached the budget, early on in January, I approached it conservatively at 110,000 credit hours. Cabinet has had discussions, and we're setting Dr. Pyer's goal at 115,000 this year.
Yeah, I see that, yeah.
Right.
So, it would just, if we reached 115,000 this year, it'll just add additional revenue that is not in the budget.
And that's a good thing, I think, both sides. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I heard what you said about the fall is ahead of schedule, but the 34.9 is still not where, not where the board, or at least this board member would hope that it would be. When is the usual uptick in fall registration, though?
I will say, so, even though the, it's complicated, because the goals have slightly changed, but at this point, last year, we were only 33% to the stretch and 34% to the budget, and we're further ahead in this cycle than we have been in the past, so it's trending to be a success at this point. I think we'll have an uptick after finals, when some students like to get through the semester before they think about enrolling for the next year.
Thank you.
Any other questions on enrollment?
Thank you.
Here we go, move on to the next item.
Thank you, Heather.
Thank you, Heather.
Good evening. We are very excited to just share with you our list of completion ceremonies that are quickly approaching in May and June. So, I don't believe there's anything new on here, but we definitely want to make sure that you are able to attend as many of these ceremonies as you are able to. It is a time for us to really recognize the tremendous work that our students do in their, in their studies.
Any questions on the schedule? I would like to make a comment here as, full disclosure, by the way, I was recently invited by Samantha, who heads up the respiratory care program here, to serve on their advisory board, which meets twice a year. There's no decisions made, it's an advisory kind of thing, things about what's going on and all this, you know? And she also asked me to talk again at the respiratory care penning ceremony.
Amazing.
But I just want to make our board aware that this twice-a-year event is advisory only, no decisions, and if there were, I would certainly step back. John?
I can't think of any board member who would do better.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on if there's no other comments on the, I hope you can make some of these dates, there's a lot there, but, and it's a busy week, I know, for everybody at the cabinet and Dr. Spearmen, as well as those who attend some of them. Next item, Dr. Pyer.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, trustees. Very brief update on a secret mission that I was on in the last couple of months, working with Dr. Spearmen, Heather Snyder, VP Snyder. Primarily, this past late summer, we had a group on campus through the marketing and communications departments and our leadership of Jennifer Thompson, from a group called Interact, that focuses solely on community college student success. This organization presented to that team late summer information about serving the needs from a marketing and communications lens of the adult learners in our community. It was very good conversation, good presentation that provided, and post that conversation, I ended up speaking with the consultant that was on campus about other opportunities that that organization has, again, their focus is on community college student success. So, we talked about student retention initiatives, and you've approved already, a few months ago, the contract, no, actually, I think it came in under the $25,000. You didn't approve of a contract, because it was not that expensive. My apologies. So, anyhow, we did enter an agreement with Interact to do a secret shopper effort, to look at our enrollment process specifically, when somebody calls the institution, or emails, or goes online to the institution, and tries to identify ways to enroll in the institution or learn more about the college, our programs, primarily in the credit environment at the college. So, I was participant of a secret shopper program here at Rock Valley, probably back in 2011, and I think that's the last time we've done an effort like this. The goal was to kind of take a look at our customer service efforts, and are we providing accurate and clear and concise and timely information back to those that are looking for information on Rock Valley College? So, that survey was conducted, let me go to the next slide, through, from February 1st to February 15th. And during that time, they created five personas that the company reached out to the college and tried to identify, again, resources and information that would support their enrollment at the college. We did not have them complete applications, because we did not want to add to confusion within our own Salesforce application system. So, we stopped them at that point. They were not allowed to go ahead and complete an application, but they were information gathering, asking questions. They identified themselves as working adult students, as transfer students, as new freshmen coming in right after high school, as unemployed adults looking for retraining opportunities, and as first-time college students only coming from a multiple different environments. So, they tried to take on different roles, as they were making a series of calls, primarily to admissions, records, financial aid, and the advising office. Those are the most important contacts they were outreach. They did do some late-round calls to testing, to kind of confirm information they'd receive from the admissions office. So, again, they concluded these calls between February 1st and February 15th of this past spring semester here, and overall, we had really, really positive results. In fact, the consultant called me right away and said, this is probably one of the, out of the gate, one of the best impressions we've received in doing this around the country, is that they were very, we had lots of warm receptions, lots of good information, but in any secret shopper environment, we always wanted, well, that's great, but tell us what we need to do to improve our customer service. So, again, on your screen and on your package, you'll find that we, they each made five calls, and then corresponding emails to admissions, advising, financial aid, and the registrar's office. These ultimately- office. These ultimately ended up assessing, again, the last thing was our chat bot. We have an online tool that is actually staffed live by a person between 8:00 and 5:00 p.m. every day, Monday through Friday, and then after hours, it kind of goes to like a voicemail, if you will. So the calls and the emails were outreach by the organization during those two weeks, and most of the time, they received very positive feedback. We received positive feedback from what was done. The things that we need to improve, every time then when he calls, we should be responding with, "Hello, this is Patrick, Rock Valley College, admissions office," for example. That's how they would coach us in a customer service lens to answer our phone calls. We did not do that every time somebody picked up the phone. Very often, we got Rock Valley College, but we didn't always get a name, we didn't always get a department. So that's a training opportunity for all of us to recognize, and we've already begun implementing it. We got this report back in early March, and we've already started to implement some of these suggestions from the organizations. Another opportunity was to, during the conversation, is to make sure we got a phone number and a name and other contact information for two reasons. One, if we got disconnected during the call, or if we transferred and we didn't get them transferred successfully, we'd be able to reach back and make sure they got the information they needed. But secondarily, is to make sure that we had a chance to then reconnect with that person a week later, a day later, at the right time, to see if they got the information they were looking for, were they ready to take the next step in their enrollment process at Rock Valley College. So we weren't always consistent in getting that information from those callers as well. So that's another training opportunity that we've already implemented in multiple areas, to make sure that we're more consistent in getting that information. And then the third part was, we didn't always answer the phone calls with, "Did you have all of your questions answered?" Did we always kind of confirm that that person, again, had the right links, the right contacts, and were they ready to make the next steps? So again, a little bit of a customer service training opportunity for us. It was been, it's been very beneficial. Some very quick, easy fixes, and plans now for this summer to spend more time with each department, on probably a half-day retreat or a full-day retreat, annualizing now a customer service review process for these offices, and certainly beyond those, not just these offices, because there's some important tools that all of us can use. The other part was an email campaign, that again, their indication to us was that the responses were very good, they came through quickly, but they weren't always signed by a specific name. It was often just from the office, and they would like us to add a more personal touch to those. They didn't always have the same kind of look and feel, you know, they didn't have the same type of format, they didn't always include kind of the college branding information, you know, the official logos and those types of pieces, that we need to be more consistent in how we apply those. When we do those things in our Salesforce CRM, they are automatically built that way, but when it comes back from an individual office, it isn't always set up in that manner. So again, the lesson learned here is to be more consistent in how we apply that information to each response, and to make sure we're adding a personal touch and thanking that person for their time, and how they can reach us back to make sure we get all the information that they're looking for. That's primarily the goal of what we accomplished. And again, we're going to try to implement more regularly customer service training. We do a lot of this when people are first start at the college, but we don't always do a very good job of continually reminding ourselves to bring this topic back to the front. So I'm going to stop there and see if there's any questions.
Yes, sir, John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My first thought when I saw this was, and maybe I missed the memo that we were going to go ahead and do this, although I don't know that you'd want to disclose that in advance, how much did this service cost?
It was $7,500.
And it's, the five calls, five calls went out to each department?
From each of the five individual personas.
Right.
Correct.
And the first thing I thought about that was, isn't that a small sample? But, and if you have an answer for that, I'm glad to hear it. But, you know, when can members of the board get a copy of the report that they wrote in full?
As soon as I, I didn't think to send that whole thing along. I do certainly have that, and I will certainly send that along.
Well, very good. And I will say also, I was shocked, surprised, and I'll say astounded, that they thought that more training was needed. Are they offering to provide that at additional cost, or are we going to do that ourselves?
We plan to do so internally. We certainly could look at consulting for that service as well.
Okay. Well, I'd want to know if we wanted to spend some money consulting. At least this trustee would. And to me, it seems that the most crucial department that they would have shopped at is financial aid. Did any of the departments, were the comments you made kind of universally applied, or were there some departments that did better than others?
Certainly, there were some departments that were more consistent in applying some of those customer service traits than others, yes. So admissions and advising probably seemed to lead the way, and records and financial aid probably were the ones that needed a little more attention.
Okay. Well, I think financial aid would be crucial. Those are all my questions. Thank you.
Very good, sir.
Any other questions? Yeah, Gloria?
Well, I just have a quick comment. So overall, you were pleased with the results?
Yes, ma'am. I was pleased with the results overall, but yes, why we did this was to find out where we have opportunities to grow and improve.
Well, it's like anything else, there's always tweaking to be done, so.
100% agree. And I think we do a good job, but we can always do better. And that's the goal, is to always try to strive for better.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much, Dr. Pyer.
All right, thank you.
Next item is the RPS 205 Extended Career Running Start Intergovernmental Agreement.
Good afternoon, trustees. So this first item on the agenda deals with the career pathways jumpstart extension. This was brought to you two months ago, because what happened is, in the first instance, when it was first devised in 2023, it was supposed to be for a duration of two years. Apparently, it was only signed for one year, or done up for one year. That was my fault. I should have checked that. RPS pointed that out. So we are here to be able to do the correction or the extension for that. So they have signed, and they are bored. Now it's time for us to just sign the extension, which takes us through June 30th, 2025.
So it's the same agreement?
Same agreement, everything, yes. It was just a matter of the date. I should have checked the date to make sure it was for two years. The intent was for two years, from 2023 to 2025, but what went on there was only until 2024.
John?
I take it, though, that everything worked as if the dates were right between the parties?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that's fine.
Okay. So next, we get into, we have 16 agreements this afternoon. Three of them are brand-new, existing school districts that we have relationships with, you know, three new early college agreements they signed, and the other 13 are all renewals. So I'll start first and...
Which are the three new?
I'm going to expect, no, no. So the first category we're going to get into is the career pathways jumpstart. So the career pathways jumpstart is really delving into CTE areas. So the students get a head start in areas like mechatronics, manufacturing, welding, or aviation. Most times, they get a certificate, and then when they are able to transition to Rock Valley College. So these three school districts, Byron, North Boone, and Pecatonica, they are the ones who are signing up for this career pathways jumpstart. The next category deals with dual and articulated credit. We have seven school districts taking advantage of this. Just a brief reminder of what articulated credit is. Articulated credit is, a student in high school, for instance, takes Intro to Criminal Justice, they get high school credit, they pass their class with an A. Then the student transitions to Rock Valley College, and they take the next course in line, which would be Intro to, not Intro, it would be Criminal Investigations. They pass that class with an A, we give them retroactive credit for the class that they took in high school. So they get both high school credit, and they get college credit too as well. The other category of IGs we run into is the Running Start. We have four school districts taking advantage of that. This is all renewals again. Running Start is a program where students have the opportunity to get their high school diploma, and also get an associate's degree concurrently. So they have two streams they could get into if they choose. They can be a senior and take a lot of college classes and just get those credits, or they could start as a junior and finish in two years and get their high school diploma, and also get an associate's degree. And then the last bucket we have is those two school districts doing senior semester. Senior semester is where the students, in their final year in high school, they take college classes. So for instance, we have Byron on there. Byron is taking the prerequisites for nursing. So when they start in the fall semester, they'll be able to start their nursing program. So it's basically high school students, final semester, taking college-level classes. So I, my ask again is for us to, for the board, to consider and review and approve these 16 agreements. 13 renewals and three new ones.
Dr. Spearman?
Dr. Stewart, would you explain which ones under number five are new, which ones under number six are new, which one?
Yeah.
No, the only new ones we have is the career pathways jumpstart. The first three, that's it.
The first three are the new?
New. Everything else, the other 13 are all renewals.
Okay. Five A, B, and C are new?
Yes.
Yes.
Those are new, brand-new.
But the agreement itself is the same as other schools?
Yes, yes.
So the wording is the same?
Yes.
Just that we got the three new schools?
Yes.
Any other questions? So for the board meeting, instead of printing all this material out, can we have like one page for each item rather than the whole stack of paper? I mean, you know, it's a lot. John?
It's a lot of paper, at least.
Yeah. Well, I agree with that, and it's okay with me, at least for the trustees.
Yes, sir.
But I think the official stuff, since it's not, it has to be attached, so people, the public can access it. I don't mind saving paper for us, but, you know, you've got to, you've got to have, you should get another packet at least. And then if anybody has any questions, we'll come to you, hat in hand.
Let me clarify, so we make sure we're all on the same page. All board members are saying that we could reduce the amount of paper that we give you for the official packet. But we'll, you always have the electronic version anyway, that you can go in and look at peruse too. But for this purpose, we have to talk, and I know Gorsky doesn't like paper anyway, so it's okay. But I just want to make sure that that's what we're saying.
And we're talking about these agreements, right?
The agreements.
Just for the agreement.
The specific agreement.
Give the, because we'll have some more agreements next.
We have some more with other schools.
Well, they'll be throughout the summer.
If anybody really wants it, they can ask for it, but otherwise...
I'll ask for the new ones.
I mean, as long as there's no changes, then why not just give a one-sheet summary like you got?
Why not just bring this back?
Well, we will, Gloria, but if there's new ones, I want to see the agreements.
See, it's not, yes, the new ones.
I'm talking about the repeats.
Just put on there, C, online.
Okay, so if we show, if on the electronic packet, we put in parentheses, new, 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 or something, so you know it's new, do you still want the new paper copy, or can we?
Bingo, Ringo, for me.
You still want the new paper copy. Nobody else wants the new paper copy. Okay.
But though, the paper copy will be available if somebody else wants it, like, they can just ask for it.
Yes.
Bring one to the board meeting.
This is an eight-pound dumbbell right here.
Okay.
I do have a question. So how is it, and I'm always speaking for, you know, obviously my hometown, but like, the Belvedere, and I see North Boone is on there, and that's even further. So is it because they didn't want to? They didn't want to?
Right, yes. So they, we approached the schools. So the dean of early college, Dr. Cindy Schaefer, she and her team do outreach to the schools, so that's how we have these new agreements. So existing customers, or clients, we call them, you know, the school districts, we reach out to them and ask them, "These are some new things that we have. Think about it." And so these three school districts decided to add this on. Sometimes, you know, you approach them, and they decide they don't want to do certain things, you know. All you can do is just advertise and talk about the benefits of.
Because we did do the Running Start program at one time in Belvedere. Is there a reason why they don't want to do it anymore? What was the reason for it?
We are supposed to do that. We just don't have their signed agreements yet.
Okay.
So you will see career pathways for District 100, and you will also see dual articulated credit and Running Start. They just haven't signed their agreements to the board yet.
Okay.
So we just had Dr. Tobin mention that we still plan to have Running Start agreements and other agreements that'll come through in May, June, maybe July. They trickle in, but I'm just making sure that those on, online also heard her, that like, Belvedere School Districts and others are still supporting this, but they'll bring, they'll submit their information at a later date, May, June, or July.
Gotcha. Okay.
John?
Bob, I had, in the interest of shortening the meeting, I didn't ask Dr. Stewart to go through the various agreements that we offer, because I read through them, and I was able to understand with his explanation now what they are and what they do. But there are some schools I see that are renewing their Running Start, and that's good, because that's a long-term program that we've had. But I think the ATC Center programs are different in that they're newer. Am I right, Dr. Stewart?
To an extent, yeah.
And so that's why I think there's the three new ones, but there may be more new ones. And that's for the mechatronics and welding and those kinds of things that they do at the ATC Center, which is good.
Yeah, our career pathways, jumpstarts, newer initiatives that we have, that's really getting to some of those dual-credit opportunities specifically for career technical education, that's a new initiative. Basically, it's been, for the most part, the Running Start classes or program have been focused on liberal arts, sciences, but this is different. This is new, and they've been, the school district's been wanting more of this. So, and that did, some of that was triggered with the ATC and the welding program and things of that nature.
Well, for me, Mr. Chairman, I always like to look at, it's usually somewhere around Exhibit C, where it shows what the courses are available to the high school students. And for the Running Start program, I mean, it's like three, four, five, six pages from, for the ATC programs, it's usually three or four courses. And, you know, because we're new in that area, and it's more specialized, but I look forward to the growth in that area. And the other important thing is that, I don't know how many parents I've talked to who really enjoy the fact that their kids can get college credits that are college-bound, and I think that there are certain parents who anticipate, and their kids anticipate going to college, and if they can save some money in this day and age from tuition through Rock Valley College, that's always been our, to me, our best calling card, and we're doing it. So we, you know, good job.
Yep, good.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart.
Thank you so much.
Dr. Spearman, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stewart.
Move on to the purchasing, and time for Ellen.
Let's put Ellen on the ground.
All right. This evening, we have one purchase report. Purchase report A is FY '25 purchases. The first item on the purchase report is Deere and Company for $107,12.62. This expense is to purchase a John Deere Gator XUV 845R, a John Deere 4075R compact utility tractor, and a John Deere 440R loader. These are coming through one of the consortiums, Sourcewell Consortium, which has awarded Deere and Company for the grounds maintenance contract number through a competitive bidding process. We did do additional due diligence and sought out additional quotes, and Deere and Company is the lowest responsible provider. The next item is Walter Incorporated for $39,000. This is a blanket purchase order request, which will cover classes offered through the continuing education area, as well as providing some specialty three-day training classes for the trade grant. as well as providing some specialty three-day training classes for the trace, trade grant. So this is for forklift, warehouse, aerial, and specialty three-day trainings again. And we do expect forklift and warehouse classes to continue to increase. The curriculum for the classes is Walter's, and it is, they are the sole provider of those classes. Item C is Midland Paper.
Excuse me, who's, who's being trained?
Who's being trained?
Yeah. I mean, these are classes for training, right?
Students?
Who's being trained?
Community members.
Huh?
Community members.
So is it part of the ATC program?
They are located at the ATC.
Okay. There you go, John.
So the next item is Midland Paper for $64,355.27. This is for the general paper needs of the college, as well as specialty paper used by Print Services. Bid 25-05 paper received four submittals and was opened on March 26th. Costs were calculated based on the college's average annual use. Midland Paper's calculated cost was at $58,169.22, but we are recommending to round it up for the blanket purchase amount. The other, other bidders didn't, were not able to provide pricing on all of the paper products, and some of them required minimum orders. So this is for a one-year contract with a two, one-year renewal options, and this is a not exceed. The next item is CDW for $94,790.25. This is to upgrade the college's server environment with new hardware, software, and services, which will be used to host the college's virtual server infrastructure. Bid 2503 VMR Ware received one submittal and was opened on March 26th. CDW was the lowest responsible bidder. This includes a five-year warranty. And all those items would fall under the bid exception F. The college has voluntarily bid it out to uphold the college's commitment to financial responsibility. The last item on the purchase report is for Helm Service, $34,104.68. This expense was for the emergency repair of the water main break, which broke on February 11th on the main campus as the water main was leaking into the lower level of the Stundstrom Student Center and needed emergency repair to the electrical and plumbing systems. Helm has been the college's unit bidder for electrical services since bid 21-08. Repairs began on February 12th and were completed by February 16th. Any additional questions on the purchase report?
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ellen, what in the, the two one-year options, are there, are there mutual options? Are there our option, are there the company's option? Who has the option on those?
They're generally a mutual option.
Okay, so if both parties agree, then we do another year.
Correct.
If they don't agree, then see you later.
We go out to bid again.
All right, well, I would be remiss if I didn't ask with Paul not here. I know we sent it out for bids and we didn't have to on the one bid we got. But I think Paul would say it's always better to get more than one bid. And maybe you tried and you couldn't, but it's set.
It, it was sent out to over 400 people, funders to respond to, and we only received one response.
Okay.
The next item this evening is the cash and investment report. Operating cash and investments increased $1.9 million in March, $95.5 million as of March 31st. The working cash fund increased $16,000 due to interest earned during the month to $2.375 million at the end of March. Capital funds increased $91,950 to slightly over $26.3 million. Total operating cash and investments is at 92.02% of the operating budget at the end of March 2025. Any questions on the cash and investment report?
John?
Are we in good shape, Ellen?
Yes, we are.
Sounds like we're in very good shape, is that right or no?
I'd say we're in pretty good shape.
Okay, I know that's the best you'll do.
The next item is a resolution calling for Bond Issuance Notification Act Public Hearing Bonds not to exceed $56,250,000. This resolution is in anticipation of the call for Bond Issuance Notification Act, the Bena Public Hearing, to issue bonds to pay the debt certificates, which are closing on April 21st, to pay for the Downtown West facility. Are there any questions regarding this?
Is that being posted anywhere so that people can raise a question or two?
Yes, the Bena Hearing will be posted in the newspaper.
The newspaper was, which is the newspaper?
It'll be the Rockford Register Star.
Jeez.
Any other questions, John?
Ellen, can you explain once again the, our indebtedness and the bond sales and how much money we're going to get? Where it's going to go and how much it's going to cost us?
So we issued, have issued bond certificates, which are closing on April 21st. And just for a point of information, we went out for subscription for those bond certificates, those debt certificates. We were oversubscribed. We received subscriptions for twice, more than twice the amount than we were asking for. So that just speaks to the credit quality of Rock Valley College and the interest in those kind of certificates right now. So we are going, the bonding process is a two-step process. First, the college has to incur debt, which we are doing through the debt certificates, which the board approved. Then those debt certificates are retired when we issue the bonds. So the bonds that we're issuing now will pay off those debt certificates, plus any interest on those debt certificates, and then any costs that we're incurring from our advisors who are walking us through this process. So at the end of the day, we are expecting to have about 52 to 53, 54 million of total bond receipts. It all depends what the market, market, market results are when we actually issue the bonds.
Am I correct in my, my reading of the bond market has taken a little dip?
Yes, the market has been very volatile. Our debt certificates, PMA and Nusro, who was the underwriter for those certificates, were actively watching the market. And because of the volatility, they decided to pull the trigger a day early to lock us in at a better rate.
Well, that's good.
So, does that answer your questions?
Well, I'd be, you know, I'd be untrue if I didn't say I was a little nervous about the bond market. But if, now when we're locked in, are we locked in?
For the debt certificates, yes, we are locked in. And we're not locked in for the final bonds at this time.
And that would be, that would happen April 21st?
No, April 21st is when the debt certificates are closing. The bonding will start, I think we are bonding in June, because it's a process.
And can you explain to me why, what, what good could happen with our bonding in June and what bad could happen? If you, do you understand what I'm saying?
I know what you're saying, and I don't have a crystal ball to say what, how the markets are going to react to everything and what is going on in the administration at the federal level.
Right, but could you give me like what, what would be a good result and what would be a not-so-good result? That's all I'm asking.
A good result would be that we, the rate we get is reasonable and what's expected. I can't tell you what that is right now. A bad result is bond interest rates go sky-high and we have higher interest on those bonds. And then that would be repaid through the taxes. The tax levy is what pays off our bond debt.
And once we offer the bonds, once, I mean, that's, if they're accepted at a high rate, we have to pay?
Correct.
Okay. So that's bad?
That would be bad.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions on this particular?
Move on, then, thank you.
The next resolution is also related to the bonds. It is the resolution calling for the parameters of the funding bonds not to exceed the $56,250,000. So this resolution is intended to set forth the bond parameters for the issuance of the 2025 bonds for the Downtown West facility. And we have done this one in the past. Any questions on this one?
Nope.
All right, next on the agenda is the budget. So on the, regarding the FY '26 budget, as we know, operating funds, the revenue assumptions were 3% increase for 2024 EAV estimates, a 2% increase for 2025 EAV estimates, which is, current EAV estimates have been increasing about about 6% a year. So this is a very conservative stance on real estate tax revenue. We are estimating flat state funding for the ICB operating and equalization grants. And that is flat fiscal year '24's actual receipts, even though the governor has put in a 3% increase into his budget proposal for community college grants. The enrollment projection, as we already talked about a little bit earlier, is at 110,000 credit hours, even though Dr. Pyer's goal is 115,000. We are projecting no increase in tuition or fees. And our projected investment revenue is kind of based on current interest rates, which have declined slightly, but now short-term rates are going back up again. I cannot predict this. Expenditure assumptions are the contractual salary increases for the Fraternal Order of Police, faculty and support associations, other salary increases for administration, professional staff association, and educational support personnel. Healthcare, we have experienced an actual increase of 8% for calendar year 2025. Our healthcare is on a calendar year, not a fiscal year. So anticipating a similar increase in 2026. Contractual services was increased, was based on contractual increases. General materials and supplies are projected to increase due to inflationary pressures. Travel, conference meeting expenses also increased due to training opportunities for staff and for the trustees. Fixed charges are expected to increase due to rental and lease expense increases. And utilities are actually projected to decrease. When we did the budget for FY '25, we were expecting greater rate increases than actually we've incurred. So the FY '26 budget is going to be lower than the FY '25 budget for utility expenses. Capital outlay is simply the replacement of smaller dollar instructional equipment. Regarding our audit fund, the expenses for the college audit revenue is from property tax. TORT fund, which is Fund 12, those expenses are for college insurance, FICA and athletic insurance, health benefits, Fund 18, college medical, dental life, and other employee benefits are included in there, as well as the RVC Care or Wellness Center. Overall, our budget is going to be... Hold on one moment, I had that jotted down. Our total budget for all funds is $229,821,283. The reason it is so high is Fund 3 for capital expenditures, that is exceeding $111 million. And that is due to projects for the Downtown West, CL 2, which we've placed in the budget, and that is $35 million, because we include the CDB funds, as well as some other larger projects for the Ring Road and other kinds of repairs.
Will all that capital be spent this year in fiscal '26?
Most of it will be, the only caveat I will say is CL 2, because that is a CDB project. I cannot predict when that is going to even start.
But it's part of year 2029?
I've put it into my budget, yes.
So we may or may not spend it all?
We may or may not spend it all, we just don't know about that particular project.
And again, I draw the question about your budgeting at a 110 credit hours, whereas she's got a 115, and we finished at 115. So, I mean, that's good, that you didn't go to 115 for the budget.
That's correct.
I like that.
So if you go to the next slide real quick, please. One thing I do want to point out, the FY '26 budget is balanced. Again, this is for operations, Fund 1 and Fund 2, and we again are having a $3.8 million contingency. So I am projecting that our revenues in this budget will exceed our expected expenses, and we do have a contingency of that $3.8 million, just as in FY '25, we had a contingency of $4.2 million. Are there any questions?
John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last year at the budget, I learned outside of our budget process that President Spearman had called for across the board 5% cuts, I believe it is. Do we have any of those surprises lingering in this presentation of the budget?
No, we did not do any cuts this year.
Is there anything that the trustees would like to know that you haven't told us so far?
No, the only other recommendation we made is ask them to try to cap their expense increase over the FY '25 budget to the FY '26 budget by 2%. But I can tell you right now, there are, most departments, if they had contractual expenses, they had to go over the 2%. So if they really had legitimate expenses that were going to exceed that 2%, they are in this budget.
Okay, and if who had the 2% increase in costs?
Any of the departments.
Okay, so there's a built-in contingency there as well?
Yes.
Okay. Our, in terms of our employees and the salaries, do we have the same number of employees this year or this fiscal year that we had last fiscal year?
Similar.
Well, what's that mean?
I don't know what the exact number of employees were last year at this time. But I know we have budgeted for every employee that's here on campus and any currently open positions.
Question, how many openings do you have? Are you budgeted for?
Are you budgeted for?
No, two questions. How many did you budget for openings, and how many do you actually have?
I'd have to get back to you on that answer, I can't tell you off the top of my head.
Can you get back to me on my questions as well?
Which one?
Do we have as many employees in this budget as we did in last year's?
Okay, number of employees this budget? And the number of open positions, is that the other question?
The ones you, how many you got budgeted and how many you actually have?
Okay.
I, I'd like that too, you know, that's great information. Good question by the chairman there.
All right, any other further questions?
Any other questions on the budget? Richard?
I just want to say you're fantastic.
Oh, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
I didn't know you didn't have a crystal ball, I thought that's what you were using, because it always worked.
I dropped it and broke it a long time ago.
That would happen.
Just like the microphone?
I didn't break the microphone, though.
So a question also, how, how good, how, how do you feel about the state revenue? Are you feeling okay that we're going to get what you're forecasting, or is it any squishiness in there? You know, they got a budget problem.
They have a budget problem, but I think that, I'm feeling good about the state budget number.
Okay.
I'm going to go out on a limb on that, I feel good about it.
Very good.
We feel we'll receive our dollars.
We will receive our dollars.
Okay, good, thank you. Any other questions on the budget? Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item here, which is operations. Thank you, Ellen.
You're welcome.
Thank you, good job.
Give you questions on your presentation.
Good evening, trustees.
Good evening.
I'll start off my presentation as I always do with the personnel report. As you can see, there are two appointments and two potential appointments on the report. One is for the dean of career technical educations, which we report to Dr. Stewart. Our new individual, we will be starting effective April 9th, 2025. The second appointment is for our Vice President of Human Resources, which is full-time and will start May 1st, 2025, and that is Dr. Terrica Huntley. In addition, we have a potential for a biology instructor, full-time, that we are working to fill. And we do have the Executive Director of IT, which I'm attempting to fill as we speak. Any questions on appointments, otherwise with departures? Tricia Wagner is leaving from the, as the Director of Adult Education. She is resigning effective April 11th. And Carol Anderson, a mathematics professor of, after 30 years, is going to retire effective May 31st, 2025. Yes, ma'am?
Just a quick question. Tricia is the one that was working at the old Register Star Building?
Correct, yes.
She's leaving? Okay. Thank you.
And where is Budjic, the Dean of CTE located physically? Is he at the ATC?
WTC.
WTC?
Yes.
Widward Technology Center?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to the sabbatical leave.
I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Amanda Smith.
Good evening once again. I am grateful to bring to you the request for a one semester sabbatical for Professor Mariah Nagy. She applied for a one semester sabbatical during which time she will be completing the research portion of her doctoral work. We are really grateful to be able to support our faculty in such a manner. Interesting to know, we have 36 faculty members who already have their doctoral degrees, which I believe is absolutely fabulous. And three additional have terminal degrees, so masters in fine arts. And we are just, we have a tremendously talented faculty ship. And we are pleased that we are able to request for your support in helping Professor Nagy complete her doctoral work.
Any questions, John?
I don't have a question, I will wholly support this.
You what?
I will wholly support and vote yes for this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item?
Thank you, Dr. Smith. Our next item in the operations is a resolution honoring the retirement of Rock Valley College employees. This is a resolution that we bring to the board on an annual basis. This year, we are doing this for all individuals who retired during 2024, 2025 calendar year. All their names are listed here. These, Rock Valley College, you know, wants to honor and celebrate the commitment and dedication of these employees, who contributed countless hours and used their unique skills and talents towards the betterment of Rock Valley College. Many worked with faculty and staff to develop curriculums. They used their unique teaching styles to share knowledge and experience with countless students. And others worked behind the scenes to make sure that things ran smoothly in the day-to-day operations at Rock Valley College. So it's our recommendation that we honor those listed in this personnel report and wish them the gratitude and best wishes as they move forward in the next stage of their lives. Any questions on the resolution?
No questions?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm particularly sad because mostly these people started when I started, so.
Well, you don't have any gray hair that I see.
That's why I keep my hair short. The next item up is for the 2025 Summer Flex Days for full-time ESP, SSA, PSA, and administrative staff. This is an item that's been brought to the board in the past for a resolution. It's recommended again in 2025 that the board approve five eight-hour summer flex days to be offered to the ESP, SSA, PSA, and administrative staff to be used between May 19th, 2025 and August 1st, 2025. The summer flex days must be used during the time period above and will be forfeited if they don't use it. So it's a use it or lose it situation. And they have to be used in eight-hour blocks and scheduled through the appropriate supervisor, which is similar to what we've had in the past. So it's a recommendation that the board approve these summer flex days that can again be used between May 19th, 2025 and August 1st, 2025.
Question, John? Can you review for me, please, the flex days? Apply to all of our employees or just the non-union employees? Or who's able to take advantage of those?
So ESP is non-union. SSA is union. PSA is non-union, and administrative staff is non-union.
So are there any employees who are not?
FOP.
Oh, okay. And how many? We've had this, and then we got rid of it, and then we brought it back. Is there, um, not to give anybody any suggestions, but is this, we take this, we take this every, it seems like every year. Is this, and I know we serve, or we sign long-term contracts. Is this, will this, do you think, go into the next contract as a negotiated item? Or, that remains to be seen?
I, I don't, I can't speculate what they're going to negotiate in the next contracts. I don't know if the attorneys could speculate, but I, I don't know. I guess it would be eligible.
Okay, well, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions on this topic? If not, we'll move on to the next one.
The next item for the board is contingencies for the different projects. As stated in the policy, contingencies are approved by the administration but brought before the board for information. So the first item that is up there is for the downtown campus. There was a change order approved for putting in a site camera with solar power and actually a large pole to mount the camera on. This allows us to market the downtown area through different avenues so that people in the college can see it. And we also take time-lapse pictures multiple times a day so that we can create a time lapse of the construction as it moves forward to completion. The second item is a change order that occurred between IFB versus IFC. And you're probably wondering what that is. So IFB is issued for bid versus issued for construction documents. So Northern Illinois Services, which did part of the demolition and, oh, actually, they've done two parts. They're doing the demolition and they're doing some site work. This actually is for site work. Found a difference in the drawings for a particular piping coming out of, I believe it was the downtown training center. And in order to correct that, we had to authorize a $6,000 change because they had to increase the diameter of the piping. It's not uncommon sometimes to have that happen between IFB and IFC drawings.
So on the camera, is there any, any times during the 18 months where something will be posted on the website or on Facebook or something, just to see?
Oh, sure.
For the public to see what's going on?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Yes, that's, that's part of the plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
I was going to see. Yeah, Jennifer's nodding, so yes.
What was answered?
She was nodding, yes.
Jennifer Thompson is nodding, so she's the one that would be doing that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. The next item listed there is for the demolition of the downtown. This was an allowance that was in the downtown demolition budget. We did not utilize any of the funding, so therefore we're getting a $16,250 credit back from the contractor. So this is not a, it depends on how you look at it from an accounting standpoint. This is not a negative change order, it's a positive, we're getting the money back.
Oh, that's always good.
The next item is again for the downtown demolition. This was for allowance number two for unsuitable soils. There are two items listed there, which is the $36,000 and the $17,000. Those are actually brought to the board in the past. And you were notified of those. The final item is the money that's left over because demolition is complete. And so we will be receiving a $17,127.07 credit from the contractor. So the total credit back will be $33,377.07.
On a $229 or million-dollar budget, okay.
Every little bit counts. The final item is for the SSC LED lighting. This project originally had a $50,000 contingency. We did bring nine light fixtures in the bookstore that needed to be added to the board previously. We have two additional change orders. One is to rework a situation that we had in the Student Center atrium. They had to rewire the switches, that was unforeseen during the original documentation. So that was for $6,992. In addition, we had to increase the lighting in a particular storage room. The lights that were specked weren't bright enough, so we had to change those out. And that was a $1,689 change order. That being said, the project is 99% complete, and we still have $39,998.20 left over from the contingency. And I suspect we don't expect any additional change orders. And I would expect to see a credit similar to what we got on the other projects coming forth on this project. Any questions on the change orders?
Nope.
Okay, hearing none, we'll move on.
Thank you. The next item is a verbal update, and this is regarding the CL2 building. That was discussed earlier, actually, by Ellen. So as Ellen stated, that this is actually a CDB project, which is the Capital Development Board, for anybody who doesn't know that. They are running this project. It's a combination of state money and local money. In other words, state of Illinois money and Rock Valley College money. They have been negotiating with Bailey Edward Design, Inc., which is the architect. They have reached an agreement with the architects. The architect's fee for that project is 1.452,668. We, as a college, are made aware of the contract. And we, the contract is between the CDB and the architect firm, but we sign as acknowledgement that, as the site where the work is going to take place. So I wanted to make you aware of that so that you can be aware. But the expenditure, it's not actually expensed out of the college, it's expensed out of the CDB. We expensed the money when we put it into the fund back when it was approved by the board. And we put all that money away into the, into the fund for the CDB project. Trust, thank you, that's the word I was looking for. I couldn't find it.
Was that money invested, or it was just sitting there in the bank?
Ellen?
Because it was there a long time, right? Like eight years or 10 years or something?
It's infested in short-term money market products.
Pardon?
It's infested in short-term money market products.
Short-term money markets.
Yep.
Almost nothing.
Short-term's paying 2, 3.5 and 4%.
Okay, thank you.
Trumpenomics.
Right, yeah.
There you go.
I guess it's better than zero. The only note I will make is that, you know, the contract is still attorney- reviewed, and we are working through CDB. Matt wants to change the COI, or Certificate of Insurance, information. So we're working through that, but we're close to getting this all settled.
So is there a target date as to when CL2 will be done, finished?
No.
Do we have a start date or a tentative start date?
I don't have a tentative start date. You know, normally it doesn't take five and a half months to negotiate with an architect, but...
How long do you think it'll take once the contract is approved? Do you think they'll?
So, I'm going to answer like Ellen answered. I don't have a crystal ball. And we are dealing with CDB.
Right.
But I assume that once we get the contract, we should be able to start fairly quickly with the architect on the design and, uh, I can't think of it. Basically designing the programs, there it is, the program development, and then working on designing the actual building itself. That process will at least take 12 months.
And CDB, they select a contractor and?
Yes, sir. They go out to bid, they select the contractor.
So we have nothing to do with that?
We have the privilege of using the state money, but they run the show.
But they select, they do the selecting of the contractors?
Correct. We, we have conversations with them and we have discussions with them, yes.
Yes, sir, John?
That's what my dad used to call the golden rule. Them that have the gold make the rules.
But we, it is moving forward. I just know it's been on a back burner for several, several months as CDB has negotiated with the architect firm.
Okay, what's next, sir? The calendar?
My final item is the facilities usage calendar or event calendar. I will point out a couple of things, two of them have already occurred. One was on April 2nd, we had a Campus Culture and Belonging Spring Symposium in the atrium, which was well-attended, I believe. And we also had the Black Hawk Area Boy Scout Council 50th Annual Derby in the PEC, which is always a fun event. In addition, I want to point out the CNCT and E Educational Regional Competition that is going on April 11th in the, at the ATC. And if you want to know what that is, because I didn't know what it was, it's the fifth time that regional high schools have come to a competition. And this will be held at the Advanced Technology Center in Belvidere. CE, CE, CTE students, excuse me, from across the region, eight area high schools will be participating in this awesome event. On Friday, April 11th, it'll be about 90 students will compete in four different divisional categories, including automotive, cabinetry, engineering, and welding. Area high school instructors and business partners have worked together over the last several months to create projects, Rubics, and schematics to make the competition cohesive to the industry standards while showcasing students' skill sets and abilities and knowledge. So, I wanted to make everybody aware of that. And also, on 4/17, we will have our Spring Professional Development Day. That will start off in the PEC at 8:00 AM. All board members are invited to attend the Fall Development Day and take part in all the different sessions and the speeches and the presentations. So if you're available, we recommend that you try and come out for that wonderful event. Does anybody else have any questions or concerns?
What day is the 17th?
What day is the what?
Thursday. April 17th.
Thursday.
Thursday? Okay, it's, yeah, thank you.
Did I also mention the CEO Challenge on the 25th?
Yes, this is.
It's a fundraiser for the 60th anniversary, which I understand they have exceeded the goal?
Yes, we have.
Speak to that, doctor?
So we have, yes, we have the CEO Challenge. This happened on Friday, October, April 25th. I don't know why it said October. But April 25th, we exceeded our goal. Brittany has done a great job with that. We'll probably have about 19 CEOs coming in. We're going to do some competition where maybe shoot some free throws, home run derby. What do we call it, the fire run? Fireman carrier? I don't know if we're going to do the fireman carrier, but we'll do the holes. And Brittany told us not to run, so we'll try our best to speed walk when we do that one. one. We'll, we'll do some, a drawing of RV and the way our professor, Professor Vincent, Matthew Vincent, he, he does it where, once you put the, the pen or the pencil on the paper, you can't take it off, and you gotta draw. So we're going to do RV that way. We're also going to do a little bit of RVC trivia, and it's a time to just have some fun, explore the campus, and talk a little smack while enjoying reminiscing about our 60th year anniversary. So feel free, that actually is going to be a very busy day. We have ALS Leadership Conference happening on that, in that morning or during that day as well. We have some Eagles Awards happening that, at lunchtime, and actually, the night before Thursday, I will be in Springfield for the Phi Theta Kappa banquet for all Phi Theta Kappa students throughout the state. I am the Illinois Community College Presidential Liaison for that, so I help to coordinate that event. So that'll be a busy week. That will have board meeting, Phi Theta Kappa, and CEO Challenge, and a lot of other things.
A busy week's coming.
Yes. Looking forward to it.
John? Will, will we have a doctor in the house for the CEO Challenge, I hope?
Well, you know, I will, I don't know. Bob, will you need a doctor?
I don't think so.
You'll be ready to go?
I'm ready to go.
Nursing students.
I'll be there for lunch, and I'll shoot baskets, and that's about it.
We'll have some of our students cheering us on a little bit, and they may have to do some in-house clinicals if we pass out.
Well, we've got the nursing students, too.
We've got a lot of nursing students, we can have them on call.
Yes, thank you.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Is there any other business unfinished or new?
The, under unfinished business, I really need, we still need some type of direction from the board at some point regarding, you know, Magna Mayor just spoke. Do you guys want us to move forward with this property tax and come up with a board report or something for May, or not?
John? I didn't see any, you know, the reason I asked him, what's the downside for the trustees is, I was curious first to see what he would answer, but I didn't really see one, if, if what he represented was the whole story, and, and we've had ups and downs with the mayor before, at least those of us who've been on the board a long time. So I would say, I would be in favor of it, but I would want legal to take a look at it if there's an agreement we have to sign or we could enter into, or I'd like to have them take a look at the whole program to see exactly how it's, how they've got it authorized, what they're, you know, they're going to have to have some ordinances or, or authority in the state statutes to do this kind of thing. Rockford's not a home role unit, and so it has to be within the statutory scheme of their authority in the state statutes. But the, my sister sits on the board of the Northwest Community Organization, and that's where, you know, Gloria and I are, our old stomping grounds is, and it's, they're, the hospital's almost empty. Housing is, I think, deteriorating in a lot of neighborhoods, so I'm all in favor of, trying to do what we can to get more housing built, and I, I've, I wouldn't mind if we put a gated community in with, knock a bunch of houses down and build some big homes there, but if this is a start, you know, I'm for it, and with construction costs, even a small home is going to be relatively expensive. I closed before I moved my office home on a place on the southwest side, sold for $90,000, which is the most any home it's sold for within 1.2 miles of that particular property. And, you know, there's, there's opportunity for reasonably priced housing in the city that, in the homes that I grew up in, and I can't speak for Gloria because she wasn't my girlfriend, so I never went to her house. But, you know, so I'm in favor of it, but I don't want to, and, and I didn't get the sense that this was a TIF district program, which would be, I'd be against if it's a three-year, and then waiver of taxes, and I'm not so sure that he wouldn't be back and ask for another two years, which we would, I would strongly consider if I'm still on the board, and, and that kind of thing, but I, I really want, you know, as I, I really like Tom, but as I said about others, I love him like a brother, but I really want something black and white that shows that what he says is, is based in fact.
We would be able to, because you still have an opportunity to vote on it, you'll see the full document prior, so it'll be, if this works out, they should bring, we should have something for May and mid of the whole, as long as he gives this to an advance so the attorneys can review it in advance. So then you'll be able to review the document and then decide if you're in agreement with it or not. At this point, you just need to let me know if you're comfortable with me giving him a green light, that you're at least going to consider it.
Oh, I would, I personally would strongly consider it, I can't speak for the rest of the board, of course.
Yeah, I think we should see the piece of paper.
Right, didn't we get a handout?
We'll get one.
So he gave me a copy of the IGA that is between the current municipalities, which would be RPS 205, the City of Rockford, the County of Winnebago, and the Rockford Park District. So I have this that we can send out that you would see, because I would assume we'd be signing a similar IGA.
That may be the one that he have, we've seen already, right? I don't know that that's a new one, but that's okay, we'll share it, and he'll show what the real dollar amount that will be impacting, so you should have all of that information by May, and then decide if you want to move forward.
Well, it seemed to me that he was open to some negotiation on that, and I certainly would be, too.
Let's see the paper.
Yep.
On the, on the second issue, Brian.
Okay, anything, anything else? If not, the next meeting, next regular and reorganization board of trustees meeting is on April 22nd at 5:15 in the PAIR room right here. The next committee, the whole meeting will be May 13th at 5:15 right here in the PAIR room. And can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Kudia and Nelson.
All right, Nelson?
Yes.
Kudia?
Yes.
Kennedy, yes. Simpson?
Yes.
Soltar?
Yes.
Trojan?
Yes.
We are adjourned.
All right, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Good job.
Scruff happening there, Richard. I like it.